All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'd like to call this June 19th regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole to Order, and ask for the clerk to call roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree. Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner. Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Bogard. Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Drouw.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, if you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, included in your packets are the minutes from our May 22nd regular meeting. Just need a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Item number five administrative matters, surface and stormwater utility report. We'll call on Mr. Steve Born.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to come and present some information regarding the surface of stormwater utility. But first, I want to say this. Over the last couple of months, we've had quite a bit of rain, and I thought the efforts made by the mayor, you all as city council, fire, police, and public works was outstanding. I've seen a few floods since I've been in town, and I thought you did extremely well in response to that, and there's no easy thing to do. It's always difficult when you see people in need. So just want to say thank you all very much for the job you did. Tonight, I will go through some stuff that we do, and will we have to answer any questions as we go through the process? Before I do this...
Can you put it up on this screen?
Cannot. Okay. I'm gonna have a hard time seeing that. That's really why. Anyway, first of all, I want to say you have a tremendous board that runs your stormwater utility. The chair is Bill Nickel. Life's chair is Dave Fernandez. The treasurer is Diane Crony Turner. The secretary is Kelly Workman, and then your Travis Martin is the city council representative. I am Steve Born, and I'm the manager of that. And we have a staff of three people, Stephanie Powell, Lacy Stewart, and David Blaine, who implements a lot of the programs that we have here in Hopkinsville. I want to give you a brief history of this, and I'm glad I brought my paper so I can read off of it. The utility was created in 2006. If you all recall, we had flood in 2005, and at that time, there was a political will on city council to address the flooding and drainage problems within our community. And the council basically gave four, or gave a couple of responsibilities to the utility to address. One was flooding on the South Fork. The second was flooding on the North Fork to address major drainage problems, to address remedial problems, oversee stormwater phase two, our MS4, oversee the national flood insurance policies, community rating system, and they moved the regulatory cost from the general fund budget over to the utility to pay for. So stormwater management plans that are reviewed by the engineer, flood issues that need engineering help are paid for by the utility. This one give you, this is a picture of the boulevard and old Clarksville Pike, the old car wash and Walgreens, and this was the flood of 2005. Just to give you an example of some of the things that we're looking at, that we didn't see really during this last flood event. One of the things when they created the ordinance and created the utility, one of the things they provided was a funding mechanism. Prior to that, all the funding for drainage came out of the general fund. This way, there are things that are addressed through the utility that was usually paid for by tax dollars. They created a funding mechanism called an ERU, which was an equivalent residential unit, and they determined what the average impervious surface was for the residential unit in town, which is 3,350 square feet. Tetra Tech did a master plan to try to figure out all the projects within the community, and when they did that, the council enacted a fee of $3 per ERU. And this would give you a quick mathematical summary of how that works. If you had a commercial development that had 33,500 square feet, you would divide 3,350 into it, and you'd have 10. And that's 10 ERUs, so you multiply 3 times 10 for $30 a month. We're operating under that same fee that we had enacted for us back in 2006. One of the things I think is important for us to understand is why are we able to still operate under that $3 fee? And here are some of the things that we do for containment, cost containment. One of the things that we were able to do by having a source of revenue to address stormwater issues was to go after grant money. And over the lifetime of the utility, we received over $13 million worth of grant funds, which comes out to be about 72 cents for every ERU dollar that we receive. There is a ranking system. We just don't go out and look at projects or pick them objectively, but we look at it from a perspective of ranking. What's the best way to utilize our money to affect good, positive results as it relates to flooding and drainage? We use a cost benefit analysis, which means if it pays for itself within two storm events, then that is a positive cash flow for us. One of the things I really want to point out, which is, I joke about being a Star Trek guy, but the prime directive is we cannot take a problem from one location and put it on somebody else. We gotta make sure that we're not impacting someone in the development of that. We must have easements. We cannot go onto private property as same as you all. It must address a public purpose. There has to be a public purpose involved. And the utilities, the utility does not pay for easements when the property owner is benefited. So if that property owner is not willing to give an easement, we're not going to do the project. So some of the things that we're doing right now, and will continue to be doing, is a lot of the, we've developed 11 regional stormwater basins within the community, and most of those, if you see a six-foot-high black chain-link fence around the basin, that is ours. And we're maintaining that on a yearly basis, and there are 11 of those. And I think most of you have been down Cox Mill Road. As you're going out of town on Cox Mill off to the left, you'll see one of our first basins that we installed. This helps the Woodmont area, and that is in the far distance back there. That's Hop Town Middle. That'll give you some idea of the magnitude of this basin. We also partner with USGS to develop flood gauges along both the North and South Forks. And we receive a grant from them. Our portion of that yearly is $38,000. And those river gauges, flood gauges, are tied into the National Weather Service in Paducah, so they can monitor the rainfall and tell us whether we're going to flood or not. And you can find these on our website, which is hopkinsville-stormwater.com, under flood gauges. And this is giving you an example of how far we've come. In the early days of 1980s, there used to be a post out on the east end of town that people would go out and see how high the water was on that particular post, and that would determine whether given tradition flooded. So we've got a little bit more sophisticated since that particular point in time. Buyouts, our money has been leveraged to do some buyouts. We had 106 structures that we bought out, and you can look at it like this. During these past rainfall events, we had 106 structures that did not flood because they were not there. We mow an average of about 53 acres every two weeks. There's been about 15 structures over the last 15, 17 years that have declined the buyout program. As funds become available, we'll continue to buy out more, and currently, we've received some grant money, and we're looking at about 15 new buyouts. Majority of those are along the North Fork in the Donna Drive area. One of the other things that we did at the beginning of the creation of the stormwater utility is we entered into lease agreements with the City of Hopkinsville and HWA to take care of the watershed lakes. And we tried to adjust that water during times when we have heavy rainfall to help control flooding on the North Fork. We maintain those by cleaning out debris, mowing, and repairing the discharge structures, and that usually runs at a cost of about $8,000 to $10,000 per lake. The state is in the process of requiring what they call an emergency action plan. So if they dam breaks on one of these watershed lakes, they want to know what our plan is to address the downstream impacts. Those plans are going to run about $20,000 per plan, or about $80,000 bucks. By managing the North Fork, we've been able to reduce flooding by about a foot to a foot and a half. And you might say, well, that didn't help us much at this last rainfall event, but when Mother Nature throws anywhere from 14 to 16 inches at you, it's hard to manage that. The state does come down and monitors us on a yearly basis and provides things that we need to do. Right now, we have a fair rating on all the dams. Where that comes into play is that affects our insurance. We have insurance covering not the structures, but any impacts, liability impacts downstream. We've asked or directed Howard K. Bell or Bell Engineering to provide a remediation assessment for addressing the items in the state reports. And based on what they estimated that cost would be is around $837,000 to address the items that the state is requesting us to address. Currently, we are undertaking another item that the state has asked us to do, and that is to look at the geotechnical stability of each of these dams. And we currently have a drill site on a couple of the dams, taking core samples to determine if these dams are still geotectically stable with respect to the flooding event. And some of you may have seen some of the pictures on the internet, but three of the four lakes, the auxiliary emergency spillway blew out. And we have some pictures here. This is why, and what basically, when, and that's one reason why the North Fork had the flooding issues. When these auxiliary emergency spillways started going into operation, it blew them out, and this is the result that we're going to have to address from a financial perspective. You'll turn to the next one. And I think you all have seen Tandy, and this is one of the areas here. And based on those three, we're looking at about a $750,000 figure to repair those, and this figures are coming from our engineers with respect to what they have to do. I think we got one more. And I want to show you what the drilling looks like in terms of the geological stability analysis. One of the things that we have spent money on is a high-flow culvert on the South Fork of the Little River. And we were extremely happy with the impacts. I know we still had people who flooded on the South Fork, but not nearly as much as they have been in years past. And one of the reasons for this is, excuse me, the high-flow culvert. And if you'll notice on your picture, the area highlighted in green, we came in and removed soil material from that so that when the elevation of the river comes up, there would be another channel for that river to flow out. And getting river out of town helps us with respect to the crest that comes from the east end. We're at the southwest end of town, so really, most of the water that we get is from the watershed outside of town that comes through from the east. So in this particular situation, the high-flow culvert did an excellent job. And this is on the, under the bridge on Eagle Way at the South Fork. So you can drive, you can drive through there, and there's a little path you can go down and look at this. But this is what it is when it's not in operation. And then on the next slide, you'll see when it is in operation, what it looks like. The next item are the project maps of the master drainage plan, and you can see everything in green are projects that we've undertaken. And so it's spread out through most of the community. And you can see in the red is some of the basins that we have in place. And basically, we had 51 projects. We were able to complete 27. Eight were unable to complete for some reasons. Nine didn't meet cost benefit. Three were private property. And there are other projects right now that we are undertaking that may require some type of property acquisition. So, but we are looking at other areas as people have called in after these flooding events in order to help us address some of their issues. To date, we have removed 17 log jams for a total of $88,000, and the average cost was, is about $5,500. If you remember the presentation I gave you last year, it was about $3,700. So it's went up that much in a year's period of time. And one of the areas that everyone always talks about is Laramore Bridge, and that's the log jam at Laramore Bridge. That's down by the, that's outside of the city limits on the south side of town, and that's where basically our water is discharged out of. It's on the South Fork. And the next slide is what it looks like when it's clean. So we try to get out there and get that log jam out in order to let the water flow. One of the areas that we have been working on is, again, South Fork flooding, and we had a large project that we were looking at, flood control structure out on the South Fork near the airport. As I've talked about before, that was put in to help address flooding issues downstream. We run, again, the cost benefit up regarding that project, and it did not meet cost benefit. When we started this in 2016, it was, they were estimating about a $5 million project. Because we went through a pandemic, interest rates have increased, significant inflation, it just didn't carry the cost. And in addition to that, the cost of the project was estimated to go from $5 to $10 million. So based on that, and the fact that as we went through the specific design of that, we found out that what we thought we were going to get in terms of benefit downstream, which may have been somewhere in the neighborhood of a foot, ended up to be less than half a foot, which again, didn't meet our cost benefit. So we're still committed to address South Fork flooding and flooding into town, and we'll now provide to you what some of the things we want to do with the money that we borrowed on the South Fork project. One of the other items that we did is there was a creation of a Little River Water Quality Consortium. Not only are we concerned with the amount of water and maintain, or controlling the amount of water, but the quality of water. And we were able to partner with USGS and with a grant for $800,000 to look at pollution tracking along the South Fork. And the Little River Water Quality Consortium consists of those items that you see there. Current projects that we have, we're looking at a Waddell Basin and looking at trying to address that situation. We're also in the process of doing field work on Oriole Drive to address their concerns. We completed a drainage project on 3830 the Hymen Drive. We also tore down the Roller Dome, which we had a grant for, and we have received within this year 189 complaints, and we are reviewing all of those items with respect to trying to address them the best way we can. But all that comes with a cost. And I just want to give you a picture of what the Roller Dome looked like and what it does, what it looks like now. The Roller Dome was actually, a lot of people think there's two parts of a flood plain. You have the actual flood plain, which everybody thinks of, but you also have the floodway. The floodway is the channel, basically. The Roller Dome was in the channel, and that's why we removed that. So I want to talk a little bit about these events that we've had, so you'll get some idea. And I think we sent these in a report. But we had a February 15 event, and we said 2020, but it should be 2025. We had 6.5 inches over a 24-hour period. That is classified as a 100-year 24-hour event. Two days prior to that, we had about 3 to 4 inches. So you had saturated conditions. So we felt, we felt very relieved once we had that particular event, and the amount of impacts we had was very low considered in years past. Then we came up with the April 3rd to 6th event, and we had anywhere from 14 to 16 inches over a four-day period, and that is a 500-year four-day event. So that's pretty significant with respect to what we have had in the past. And I think you all, everybody has heard it being generational, historic, and catastrophic were the terms used to define that particular event. Even though we had people that were impacted, and we always hate that, it could have been a lot worse, in our opinion. And then finally, the use of the money that we were putting towards the flood control structure, some of the things that we are looking at trying to accomplish is a more comprehensive approach to the river cleanout. I think if you talk to folks, they felt like the water flowing through town was pretty fast, and that's because I think we've been trying to keep the log jams out. But I think we want to go in now and look at a little bit more comprehensive way of doing that, and we are setting aside basically a million for the North Fork and a million for the South Fork. We're also looking at possibly a local buyout, and we have set aside 1.1 for the North Fork and 1.1 for the South Fork. The reason why we're looking at that is because we can apply for grants, but the grants that we are currently have, that we are spending money on, started back in 2018. So it took that long for us to get that grant money. So we're looking at if we can apply for grant money, but it's still going to be a long time before we see that take place. So we're looking at possibly doing something on more of a local level. And we have miscellaneous buyouts at 890. And these are for structures that may not be part of the river problem, but do have issues such as being close to a sinkhole or some, something of that nature that we need to address. We're looking at an implementation of a floodproofing program and sharing costs with someone who may have flooding in their garage or in their crawl space, that some floodproofing material might help them from that particular situation from occurring. might help them from that particular situation from occurring. We're also, we talked about the watershed lakes. We have allocated a million dollars to address some of the issues for the watershed lakes. And then we had such great success on the high-flow culvert on the South Fork, we're looking at possibility of a high-flow culvert on the North Fork. And then we also put some money aside for grant matching. And then there's, and the rest of that is basically items that explain what, what that money potentially could be used for. And then finally, as we did last year, we're presenting our budget. Our budget has to be approved by, by you all, and we're looking at about 1.9 million-dollar revenue coming in off the ERUs. And outlined there are, are our expenditures. And I want to put, I point out a couple of things. One is we put in some money for grant matching, but at the bottom, you'll see two items, bond payment one, bond payment two. So there is money that we have, but we are still paying the debt service on that money. So, and we'll continue to pay debt service on that money until we got it paid off. So I'm going to stop there and see if you all have any, any questions about anything that I went over. And?
Anybody? Questions, anybody? Yes, sir.
Fifth thing you said. The 1.1 million for South Fork and 1.1 million for North Fork for the buyouts.
Right.
If you had to give us an estimate of what it would take, how much money are we looking at to, if you could buy out all of what needed to be bought out? Do you have that kind of?
Money?
Any kind of estimate? I mean, what is the, what kind of impact does 1.1 million have on a buyout of South Fork?
Four, four, four units, four structures.
Okay.
Four to five, and same on the North Fork.
And probably how many that could use a buyout?
Uh, well, we have that, and it, that isn't, I mean, there's, I would say at least 20 per, per fork.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Bont. Are you aware of makeshift drains that's through the city? There's, there's basically a drain that's concrete with a grate over top of it that where it's not flowing to a destination? Are you aware of that?
I know there are some out there, yes, sir.
You know what's going to be done to fix those?
We are always amazed when we find those. You're talking about a drop box that has pipes in it, but the pipes go nowhere, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, there's a, there's a few of those around town. And I will say that was not done on my watch.
Yes, sir.
That was, been done a long time ago.
Long time.
Yeah, yeah. And to answer your question, you know, if, if there is a drainage problem or area associated with that, we'll go in and take a look at it. You just need to kind of point them out to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any else have questions?
I'll just say that those, there's a wealth of information in those four individuals out there. They, or five, I'm sorry, Ms. Diane, I'm sorry. But it's, it's a great board to serve on, and, and I, I thank you all, and I still, I've been on it since, I believe, 2020. I don't know much about stormwater, other than it flows downhill. I know that's about it, but, but I thank you all, and it's, it's a good board to serve on.
Mr. Chairman, we would need a motion to move our budget to?
Yes, sir. The budget?
Yep.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
And again, we appreciate your support so much. And if you have any questions or any problems within your ward or area, please give us a call. We'll go out and take a look at it and tell you what we can and cannot do, okay? Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right. Item B, Quarterly Public Works Department Report. Mr. Dave Herndon, you are up.
Good evening, everybody. This is my sort of annual ICSA update, and as I was talking with Mike the other day, I started to put together, and usually I was going to give you some GWIS numbers, but it occurred to me that most of you weren't here when we formed IXES and, and had probably very little knowledge about the IXES. So I was going to give you a high-level view of what we do down, down on Post, Fort Campbell, and why we do it. So an ICSA is an intergovernmental support agreement. It's a, it's essentially an agreement between a military installation and a county, county or city or tribal government in order to provide a service at a reduced cost to the military installation and a benefit to the community. So I'm going to go through, it's got a couple of examples, and this is just general bullet plate type information, but waste removal, ground maintenance, road support, things like that, things that the city does already that we can provide to, to our friends on Fort Campbell. Let's go to the next one. Currently, we have three intergovernmental support agreements with Fort Campbell. They are road salt purchasing, which is essentially, we're the middleman. We put in an order for X amount, and we turn that around and have them deliver it to Fort Campbell. But because we're you, because these, these people that bid on this stuff, they don't jack the price up because they're dealing with the federal government. They're actually dealing with municipal government, so they get kind of municipal government prices. Street signage, which we are currently renegotiating, re-upping, which you guys will hopefully see within the next few months, a draft of that. And pavement markings, which is us doing, us painting the center lines and painting the parking lots down on Post. So over the past six years, I did a little, did a report the other day, we've only netted revenues over expenditures of $133,000. And over six years, you go, that's not a lot of money. Well, you think about it, during that time, we probably got about $600,000 worth of equipment and vehicles during that time. And we've also been employed four staff members, and these are, as we explained when we first went through this, this is fair-weather work. This is road striping, you can't do that in the winter. Street signs, you can't, uh, street signs, you can do that in the winter, but a lot of times the ground gets too hard to work with. So these are, these are folks that work for the city, that do work, that we, that the city gets paid for on Post. But when it comes to plowing roads, you know, obviously, they're not going to be down on Post doing, uh, striping on Post when there's snow on the ground. They're up here driving, they're up there driving snow plows for the city. So we have more employees, more vehicles, uh, more equipment accessible to the city, owned by the city, that Fort Campbell has paid, had essentially paid us in revenue, and we, we've turned around, and you all have, the council, you all in previous councils have reviewed those budgets and those expenditures. So, and then lastly, we, we get these great bulk salt, bulk road salt prices, about 20% discount. In a, in a normal year, we might order 200 to 300 tons as a city of salt, of road salt. Well, Fort Campbell gets about tenfold that. They get about 2,000. I think the last order we did for them, we haven't ordered any this, this year, they get about 2,000 tons of salt. Because if you think about it, not only do they do roads, they do parking lots and everything. They do, and they set, they set salt out by the road, so a soldier can come, come by and get a bucket full and take, take back of their, their, you know, if they live on Post, they can take that, take back and throw onto their sidewalk. So again, that, it's a benefit to us because we get about 20%, 20% reduced cost because of, because of the amount of salt that they, that they order. Next slide. I don't know if it's a video play or not. Is this PDF? Yeah, video. And this is, a lot of you, you know, you go down on Post, you think of Brigade Command and, and the parade field and all that stuff, but this is what I think of when I think of Fort Campbell. This is what, this is the back forty. Everybody calls this the back forty. This is where we make our revenue. This is where we turn, this is where we turn a loss into a profit, is there's miles and miles of striped roads on, on the back forty that, that, that's, I think we, when our, when our pavement, when our striping truck is operating and makes $197 a minute gross. So it is, and that is a very good value for Fort Campbell. It'd be about, it'd be about, about 30. If they went retail contracting out on Dago Spake and wage rates, we're charging about 33 cents a linear foot, you're probably talking, a contractor would give them 50 cents a linear foot for cost. So everybody's winning in this case. And then the next, I've got, uh, street signs. We essentially pulled the old street sign up. They want the decorative, uh, street sign, street, uh, street signs. So we pulled the old sign up, and we put the new post, new sign, uh, new sign up, and we're, we're back on the road. So if y'all have any questions about that, I'd be happy to go through that, but it's, it's a, it's a win-win right now, and we hope to keep it a win-win, and it's, we work with some good folks down there. So we hope to, we hope to keep it up, and we look forward to our continued relationship with, with Fort Campbell, so.
Any questions for Dave? And then we'll go to item C, the American Public Works Association Accreditation. Stay up there.
There's just, just a memo in your, just a memo in your, in your packet. I'm not going to include anything official or, or any presentation. We are in the process of applying for accreditation through the American Public Works Association. You've heard Troy and the mayor talk about the fire department looking at accreditation. The police department is, is already accredited. We're looking at fast-tracking that process and getting, getting that information to you. That is important because if you look through the memo, you, look through the memo, one of the things that I really, that you, when you get into developing these documents, is you've got policies all over the place, you know? This folder on this server, and this folder on that server, and you've got to look at all the, this is a centralized accreditation process. One of the main things, in my opinion, is a central location for all of your policies. If you need to, if you need something, if you need something, get it. And if you don't have a policy, you write a policy and you include it in there. Mike, I don't know if we got a policy about not working on trees, when, not working on trees when their power line's in there, but we do it. You know, there's a lot of, I think the biggest chapter in there is emergency management. That's, that's one of the things that I think we do extremely well. Now, do we have an emergency, a full, robust public works and emergency management policy? I don't think we do. We've got, we've got sort of this and that. But these are, these are pieces that when you put them together, is going to be a huge policy for, for our public works department and a good way to proceed forward. There, it's a long process. It's usually about a three-year process. We developed a document, I think I mentioned, it, as it stands now, it's about 842 pages. I'm hoping to cut that down a little bit, but that document will be available for you guys to go in there and look at, or hopefully very shortly. And for your basic, your essential, your buying on it to make sure that you support us going through this, going through this process, because it's going to be a difficult one, because not only is it developing this document, we have to implement what the document says, and then we have to call in to APWA if we're coming to review. We actually have other cities that join the APWA when they come in to review it, to, it's just peer review. They come in and they'll, they may ask the tough questions that, that hopefully we'll have good answers for. So just moving forward, we hope it, we hope it goes forward well, and we think it's going to be, we think it's going to be a big, big thing for the city, and it's a, it's something we're really striving to achieve, so.
Questions for Dave?
I think you're good. You can take a seat now.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Item D, Monthly Agency Board Counsel Appointee Report. It is my turn, Ward Six, so I'll go over three that I'm on. Stormwater Utility, I think my, my friends at Stormwater just did a great job letting you know what's going on with that board. I'm also on E911 Board. They meet this month for our, our quarterly meeting. And then, of course, I serve on the ambulance board as well. That's another great board in the city. We met last, this week, it was Tuesday. So financially, everybody knows that, that board, we're in really good shape right now. A year ago, that was not the case. It was, it was a pretty bumpy road there for a while. City and the county each chipped in $100,000 to the board to, to keep us afloat. And since we're in such good shape right now, the board actually voted to return these funds back to the city and the county at this past meeting. Happy to say, the board has always been revenue-based, never subsidized with tax dollars. We're happy to say it will continue to be revenue-based as well. And again, I'm proud to be a part of that board who returns unneeded monies back to the city, and it, obviously, that doesn't happen every day around here, so I'm really proud of that board. So that last year was pretty rough, but we're in good shape now. So that's all I got, really. Go to item six, Unfinished Business. There's nothing there. Item seven, New Business. Physical Year 25-26 Community Development Block Grant Budget, and Ms. Melissa Clayton.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's my pleasure to bring to you guys the CDBG budget, the Community Development Block Grant Budget. Our allocation this year is $242,872. We are what's considered an entitlement community, which means each year, because our community has a lot of low-to-moderate-income families, we automatically get money each year from the CDBG program. And so most of the percentages are in their rules and guidelines. The admin fee is 20%. For public services, we're limited to 15%. We borrowed some money on the Section 108 Loan Program in 2011 to redo a lot of the inner-city parks. It will be paid off in 2031, but until then, we use the CDBG money to repay that loan. And so the only thing left that's really not already decided for us when we get our allocation is the $67,128.05. And this year, we are proposing to put that money to Public Facility Improvement Program. We're going to resurface the Walnut Street Center parking lot, and if we have money left over after that, we will resurface the West Side Park parking lot as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about what we're planning to do with the CDBG money.
Any questions? All right. If the committee's in favor, we need a motion to forward a MO to council. A second from Mike. Any other discussion about that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Item eight, Other. Does anybody have anything to bring up under Other? Brittany has an announcement here.
Yeah, tomorrow morning at nine here in the council chamber, KLC will be presenting an award to Senator Richardson. It's the KLC Friend of Kentucky Cities Award, and they wanted to extend their invitation to anyone who wants to show up and attend.
All right, so if anybody's available tomorrow morning at nine, just come, come on down for that. Anybody else? All right. Yes, sir.
Hop Town Tigers football camp starts tomorrow for the youth. Be over at Hop Town High School, so if you got any youth, younger kids, just bring them on, and you register on walk-ups and have fun, learn about the game of football.
Awesome. Anybody else have anything? So item number nine, that is adjournment, just need a motion. All in favor, say aye. It'll be our adjourn.